All right, I think we might get started. I know some more folks will be joining us and we'll just, we'll let that happen. Again, good afternoon. Meg Ryan here with the League of Cities and Towns. Thank you so much for joining us on your virtual lunch hour here. Hopefully you guys are all familiar with Zoom and the protocol at this point. If not, I have my right-hand man Spencer Colley here, who's just a recent graduate of the MCP program up at the U. And Spencer is going to be helping me navigate the controls and some polling and things today. If we stick at a small group, I think Spencer, maybe we might just open up the mics and folks can ask questions. Instead, right now, we have you, I think, all muted. It's that power of God here with that control. And we are asking that you use the chat box. So I will have some information to run through today, but questions are certainly welcome. And you can use that chat box and Spencer will interrupt me or if another panel or another attendee feels like they have the answer, then feel free. But we will use that mechanism. And again, so Spencer, if you, you know, if you feel like it's manageable, maybe we just open it up if we stay at a reasonable number here. Just gets a little crazy when you have a lot of folks all trying to talk at once. So either way, chat box or the audio, if not, we'll get started. And again, for those that just joined, I know we had some more folks come on. Again, we'll be using the chat books. I think you are on mute right now. And unfortunately, in this webinar scenario right now with one presenter, you just get to see me, but we will have PowerPoints to walk through here. And also, just to let you know, this will be, this is being recorded and it will be posted on our league website under the land use training tab, along with the other sessions that we've done this month and some earlier sessions that were more COVID-19 related sessions, but those are all on our website. If you would like to watch it again because it's so engaging or if you'd like to pass it on to a colleague, if you find that information is helpful and useful, then you're certainly welcome to do that. And again, this is the final series, a primer series, 101 land use. Our first session, we went over powers and duties. Our second session, we went over the general plan and zoning. And today, in our final session, we're going to be doing the rules you need to know. I like to call it the fantastic four. But this is again, is a primer and overview of mandates down from the Utah State Legislature that you have to use in your planning, city council, many other boards and commissions that you are, and these apply to all of us. Okay, so Spencer, you just let me know if there's a chat or some issue. Otherwise, I'm going to start proceeding. And is there any questions at the moment, Spencer? Are we good on as far as navigating things?
No, we're good. And I think if the attendees stay about where they are, we can allow people to talk and ask questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Spencer. All right, so let's start off for the next 45 minutes here. While you're lunching or again, maybe you're out, figured out Zoom on your phone and you're out walking and listening, that's great too. For the next 45 minutes, we're going to be talking about what the state requires for rules and rules and procedures, where you can find this on the state statute, and the resources you have to figure out how to comply. So you get to do the heavy lifting. I get the easy job of showing you where these things are at and what's required. And then it's up to you to understand them and how they relate to your job and practice. So the first thing we're going to do is just get an idea of who's on the line with us. Spencer on the call with me. So Spencer, I'm going to have you do our first poll and just asking you all where you guys are from and what you, what you do in your city, town, or county. So I'll give a second for you guys to fill that out. Have a sip of my water. All right, so we have a lot of staff. Okay, well, then maybe I'm preaching to the choir here. You guys as staff should all know that, but we do have some council members, mayors, welcome, and then some planning commissioners. So again, hopefully, and thank you Spencer for sharing that with us. Appreciate that. So that gives us a helpful idea. Staff, sometimes you have to communicate this to your boards and commissions and maybe hopefully this will be of some help to you. Okay, the fantastic four. Today, that's what we're going to review over here. The first is how, these are the things you need to know. The first one we're going to get into is rules and, excuse me, rules and procedures, writing your own rules, which is Title 10 of the Utah State Code, Chapter 3. For our county folks, if we have any, that's Title 17, same chapter. So that's the how. First of all, write your own rules. Secondly, we're going to talk about complying with the OPMA. Lots of more acronyms. All of, you know that we planners love acronyms, but the Open and Public Meetings Act, that's the process, minutes, transparency. And then we're going to talk about complying with GRMA, the Government Records and Management Act. That, who, that's kind of who gets what and how do they get it? And then finally, we're going to wrap up with complying with the Ethics Act, and that is the law as it stands and what disclosure means and what you have to do under that act. So that's the fantastic four. I like to call them the things that you are required to know when you were appointed or elected to your position. So let's start off with number one, which is rules and procedures. Okay, so in the public sector, we've traded efficiency for transparency, correct? We're doing the public's business in public. And I'd like you to kind of remember that mantra and pass that along. We are not the private sector when we, we have rules and requirements on notice, meetings, agenda, timing. All of those processes we need to comply with when we conduct our land use planning, our city council meetings, because that transparency also allows us an incredible amount of freedom to have those laws for land use in our community that are our own. What do I mean by that? We set those zoning standards, but we need to follow the public process of how we adopt those, how we create those standards, and then how we enforce and enact them. So in order to keep that flexibility, I really hope that we can all abide by these rules and procedures and the other acts that we'll talk about today. So what are rules and procedures? What's the, what's the law? Well, there's no set of mandatory rules for the city or town council or county council in the state. What the law says is that you have to have them. The content is up to you. You adopt them. So this would be found in Title 10, Chapter 3, Part 6 of the Utah State Code. And the website, I don't have it up here, but it's very easy. It's le.utah.gov, where you can find all the state statutes readily accessible and updated often. So if you ever have any question, you can always just head to that state website. So again, we don't have a mandatory set of rules, but we have to have rules and procedures. Here's some of the things that those rules and procedures might include. How we have our regular meetings, how we have special meetings. What does that mean? When would that occur? Quorum, what is that for our entity? And we'll talk about quorum in a second. It's different depending on your form of government. But we might talk about the quorum and when we can act and when we can't. We may talk about attendance. What if someone never shows up? Do we have some rules in that arena? How votes are taken and reconsidered? Rules of procedure for the council, who gets to speak, what the process may be. Roles and rules for the public. Maybe you have input requirements. And then the most important thing is how you adjourn the meeting. But again, it is up to you to decide, but you do have to have these. And we recommend the old KISS rule. You keep it simple, rely on civility and good decorum, but plan in those rules for adversity in case things do turn into a way that you're not anticipating, that you have some procedure in order to deal with it. And that could be if a meeting gets out of hand or if a planning commissioner, for some reason, is not showing civility or decorum, you might want to have, be able to rely on those procedures in order to deal with that situation. So quorum, we mentioned that before, and here's the citation again in the municipal code. Title 17 would be the reference under the county statute. Quorum defined, and again, it depends on what your, what your form of government is. So in a city with a seven-member council, the quorum would be four. In a municipality with five, it would be three. And in a six-member, it would be three excluding the mayor. And then for planning commissioners, again, if you're five or seven or you could even have one planning commissioner, you know that, right? You'd know that from my powers and duties class. But, so it depends on what your, what your makeup is. Any questions so far, Spencer? Are we doing okay?
No, we're doing okay so far.
Great. Okay, so once again, a recap, rules and procedures. You need those in written form. You need those posted on your website, if you have a website. And you need to provide those rules and procedures at the back of the meeting. That is the technical law from the state, so that I could walk into any town in the state of Utah or city or county council or county planning commission, and I'd understand how that meeting is being run. And that's the point again, that transparency and doing the public's business in public. So we have incredible latitude to decide how we're going to run those meetings. And once we've figured it out and written it down, but then, as always, the checks and balances. The legislature also is going to give us some sidebars or arms around that flexibility with these following provisions, which is the Open and Public Meetings Act, the GRMA, and then the ethics, the three that we're going to talk about. The rest of the fantastic four that we're going to talk about here next. So we make the rules, right? We decide what we want to do. But what about these procedures? What about the next three? And then we're going to take a quick poll, a quick glimpse to see if you were with me. And Spencer, if you want to pull that one up, we're just going to ask here, what does the state law say you have to have in your rules and procedures for your council or commission? Okay, we'll give a sec there. And then Spencer will post those exciting results up on the screen for us. And I know it's 100% going to be correct, because I probably have a lot of experienced folks on the line, which we appreciate. Excellent. Look at that. So that is the correct answer is number three. You can create your own rules and procedures for meetings. I think civility clauses are great, but it's not a state mandate. All right, so let's move on to these next three provisions. And let's hit the Open and Public Meetings Act. And again, this is a primer for you. This is a starting point. You can definitely do a deep dive into this and I'll tell you where you can do that. But what does this act do and why do I care? Well, it tells us, first of all, in this act, and here's the citation, which is Title 52, Chapter 4. Again, when you see those numbers up on the screen, that's usually the reference to where you can find it in the state code. But it tells us what bodies are subject to the act, like who needs to comply with this, what meetings have to be open to the public, when meetings of public officials can be closed, a closed meeting versus an open meeting. What are our notice requirements? So a nice flag there for you that you may have noticing in your own code that might be different than the state requirements. The state is the default. You can add different noticing provisions at the local level. So always make sure that sometimes if you look at the state and you say, oh, well, we do it differently. That's okay. That provision is allowed. Agenda requirements, for those of you that set the agenda, and a good question, who sets the agenda? And minutes and recording and penalties for violations. So reason council members and planning commissioners need to know this is you are subject to this, but really, your words manager or your clerk is the one who's going to do all the heavy lifting and make sure that these requirements are met. But it's important for you to know the bones of this provision, because one, you're subject to it, particularly if you're acting as a chair. You need to be aware of what the different parameters are when you act in that role. So the big picture for OPMA is again, all meetings are open to the public with limited and specific exceptions, which we'll talk about. And it's that doing the public's business in public, which is hopefully a mantra that will be haunting you at 3:00 AM this morning. When you wake up, you'll be hearing that we're doing the public's business in public. Okay. And again, this third bullet kind of deals with that. Governments exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business, and they should take their actions openly and conduct their deliberations openly. And it talks about here in the OPMA, the meeting requirements, open and closed. We're going to go into these next five issues here. Minutes and recording requirements, noticing requirements, agendas, and a public meeting versus a public hearing. What's the difference and what does it matter? So let's just start off with that, which is a public meeting. And again, the citation is there for you on the screen. So public meeting and public body. So a public body, and this is who is subject to the OPMA, means any administrative, advisory, executive, or legislative body, which consists of two or more people, and is created by law or ordinance. So planning commission, you're created by ordinance. City council, you're created by law, by the legislative body. So if you also have a parks board, a recreation board, and they are created by ordinance or created by the city council, they are also subject to this act. So meeting, what is a meeting? Well, this is the actual state definition. And it's when the public body, which we just defined, meets with a quorum, whether in person or electronically, for the purpose of discussing and receiving comments from the public or acting upon a matter over which the public body has jurisdiction or advisory powder, power, excuse me. And a meeting does not mean a chance or social meeting. In other words, often in smaller communities, in my community, the planning commission will go out after for coffee or tea or something, or have a social gathering. They usually note that at the bottom of the agenda, and business is not discussed in that area, but at least it's noticing the public that that happens. So purely administrative meeting and closed meetings are what we're going to talk about now. And what I mean a purely administrative meeting? Well, often planning commissions have work sessions. And that can either happen before a meeting or it could be an actual meeting where it's just a work session. So that would mean that the public is welcome to listen and attend, but not participate. And that's administrative when you're not taking an action, but maybe you're setting your agenda for the year. Maybe you're talking about how you're going to deal with your work plan, whatever that may be. Okay, the state auditor's website has a great little online public cheat sheet and a little quiz that you can do. And it defines here, public meetings versus public hearings. So we've talked about a public meeting, when folks are welcome to come in and listen. Within a public meeting is the public hearing. And often, as you're familiar with, when you set the agenda, typically you do your business upfront, any administrative items, approval of minutes. And then you move into a public hearing. So a hearing is within a meeting. And it has different provisions under the Open and Public Meeting Act. Different notice provisions, as well as the limit, or not limitation, but the provision that all members of the public present at that hearing have a right to speak. So, and that gets into an area which I often get a lot of questions on, is like, can we limit time? How often? Can people repeat things? So under the Open and Public Meetings Act, it simply has this provision. It doesn't detail that you are limited to certain types of time on input or other provisions. But what I usually recommend is that, one, you have that written in your rules of procedure, how you deal with public hearings. If you are going to do time limitations, be sure that you respect due process and do it uniformly, that one person doesn't get three minutes and another person gets 10. Right now, in the past few months, we have all been experiencing the electronic meeting, and I applaud you all for transitioning and incorporating public comment in that venue. So we've increased our tools with Facebook Live, with submitting written comments prior to meetings. So I think we've really seen a little bit of a twist and a change. And I will talk about that in a second, what the special session just did in regards to Open and Public Meetings Act. But this cheat sheet is a great reference point for you. It also talks about some of the state notice requirements. So I apologize that I didn't put that link on here, which I just noticed. But if you just Google the state auditor's office, you'll see under their training resources, these great resources for you. So that's an open meeting, a public meeting, a public body, a public hearing. So what's a closed meeting? Well, this is again, given detailed parameters under the state statute. There are only certain reasons that you can close a public meeting. City council members have more latitude than planning and zoning. I say planning and zoning chairs and planning meetings really never get closed. This is more a legislative body, a city council prerogative in practice. But again, just so you're familiar with the law, and if you are in a planning meeting and someone says, hey, we're going to close the meeting, you'll have a reference point of understanding that maybe that's not the correct procedure. So again, there are more of these. There's probably, I think, seven of them that apply under the law. There could be a few more. So city council members, you're going to want to ask your attorney or go to that auditor's website and you can find all of them. But here are some that I highlighted. And again, these apply to council as well, but discussing the character, professional competence or physical, mental health of an individual, discussing reasonably imminent litigation. And recommendation is to have your attorney in those sessions. And then if, again, this is maybe where planning commissioners come. If there's a purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property, perhaps the council's holding a closed meeting and asks some of the planning commissioners to attend for some kind of rationale. A closed meeting happens within the public meeting. So the actual procedure is that you have noticed a public meeting. You have also noticed on the bottom of that that you will enter into a closed meeting. So the chair or the mayor is in the public meeting. He closes the public meeting. And then either all the public leave or they go to another room that's not open to the public. And then they open the closed meeting. And we'll talk about the minutes and recordings right there. Closed meeting, any actions, it is for discussion, not for action. So you can't take a vote or decide something in a closed meeting. That has to be then done in the public view in the public meeting. So let's say I'm in a public meeting. We do some other business in the public. We go and close that public meeting. We enter a closed meeting. We discuss the issue. Maybe it's litigation or we're selling some property and we want to talk about prices, but we don't want to have that public yet because we're not sure on the numbers. But let's say we decided, okay, this, you know, we think these numbers might be good. We're not quite sure. You have that discussion. You then close that closed meeting, and then you reopen the public meeting, and then you can take action on an item. So I know that seems procedurally heavy. Any questions so far, Spencer? Are we, are we tracking?
Yeah, we have a couple of questions. The first one is, in a public meeting, must there always be an item that allows for general public comment?
So that's a great question, and that's on the agenda. And the answer is no. And we can, we can, it's simply up to you. And we can talk about that a lot, a lot of, when we get to the agenda provision, which is just next. So hold that thought.
Okay, and then our next question is, is there a requirement to read all written submissions into the record?
In a public hearing, yes, but you don't have to read them in, but you have to acknowledge them. So in other words, you open a public hearing, and there are members of the public present. And you may also have received written comments before. You need to acknowledge the different ways that you've accepted that, and it becomes part of the record. You don't need to repeat it all, though, or regurgitate it if it was a written comment. Certainly, if there are questions that you want to address, and it's that kind of informational meeting, then by all means, read them and take that time and go through it. I guess it just depends on the purpose of the, the public hearing.
And that's all for right now.
Okay, great. So closing a meeting. So this is that kind of circular example I was trying to give, but don't think it in terms of a closed meeting. It's a portion of an open meeting that is closed. So that's your puzzle for today. You can work through that one. Again, like I said, it has to begin in an open public meeting and then move to the closed meeting. Here are some of the quorum discussions, or the two-thirds of, two-thirds of the members are present, excuse me for that. And again, there are items on the closed agenda for discussion only. You cannot take final action on that. So if you're ever in a closed meeting and you take a vote or do something, then you may want to recuse yourself and leave because there could be implications of that decision at some later point.
Meg, before you move on from closed meetings, we have a couple of more questions. But on the closed meetings, is it sufficient to merely close a meeting to discuss personal issues?
So always get advice of your attorney before you have put on your agenda, closed meeting, and move into that. But yes, personnel typically, if it is, again, and those items I had on there, I think it was competence. So if you're doing a review or something like that, or something where you're discussing, again, personnel items that, yes. So you, I think, have lost the question now, but did I, did I answer that?
Yeah, I think so. The next question that we have is, if you have, only have three attending that constitutes quorum, can you still have two-thirds in favor?
So who's better at math than me? I think so, right? So that would be two, two people out of the three. Three is your quorum. I think that's correct. Maybe there's an attorney on the line that can help me, help me clarify that.
So the follow-up to that question is that, is it only, the thought behind that is that you need three in order to be unanimous?
So let's just, let's go, let's see if we can go back to that.
And maybe I can unmute Darcy and she can ask you that question. Would that be helpful?
Okay, yeah.
Darcy, go ahead and ask your question.
Great, thanks so much. My thought is we have a two-side member of government. So a quorum, it would be three. And my understanding, if you have only three that are attending, it would have to be unanimous provision, but couldn't be a two-thirds, otherwise the motion to close the meeting would fail.
Yeah, and Spencer, I could, did you hear that? Because I could barely hear that. I don't know.
Want me to repeat it?
Yeah, go ahead and repeat.
Sorry, is that a little better? I tried to increase my volume. Yeah, sorry, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. My thought is that if you've only got three members that are in attendance, that's quorum. For, for our instance, we have a five member. But in that instance, you need all three voting unanimously, you know, to pass the motion. So, in other words, if you did two-thirds, the motion would fail to close the meeting, or any motion for that matter.
Yeah, so, I think the answer is yes. But again, if there, I'm not an attorney, and I apologize. I'm not, I don't want to steer you incorrectly. So, if there's anyone else in the chat box that thinks they can answer that better than I, now that you've repeated it, I'm going to tell you, I think it's yes. But I would appreciate others' input on that. Okay. Spencer, I'm going to move on. Maybe you just monitor the chat box. If you find that answer, we can, we can shout it out if someone wants to enter that in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so, notice requirements. All public meetings must be properly noticed, which means at the beginning of the year, the clerk or recorder will post a notice of the schedule of all your meetings. And again, at least 24 hours in advance for each meeting. Under the Land Use Development and Management Act, there are specific noticing requirements for different land use procedures, which you also need to be aware of. This is for your general meeting schedule. And then there's also the State Public Notice Meeting website where items are posted. I think the majority of us now have websites. Those get posted up there as well. And all that is required under the notice, under the state law, is the date, time, and place of the meeting, along with the agenda. And we'll talk a little bit about that notice, especially in, in relation to what type of meeting you're holding. So, let's just go into that. And here's my example. So, a public hearing notice. So, we just found out that the state law said it's date, time, and place. But when we're holding a hearing, especially if it's an item where it's legislative, in other words, we're taking policy input. We have not created a law, but we're deciding on what that law should be. Or if we are doing some kind of issue where we really want to engage the public, and they do have some ability over the future determination of that permit. I think it's up to us to make sure that that noticing is explicit and that we're asking for what we want from the public. Often, we put notices in planner speak that nobody understands what the change from an A2 to an R5 means. And in plain language, that means agricultural to high-density residential. So, let's say what we mean in the notice and ask people to come and give input when they actually have the ability to have meaningful input. In other words, if it's an administrative item where you're just checking off whether it meets the code or not, is that the best place for a public hearing? And the state law has dramatically reduced the amount of hearings that are required for land use items. But let's look at this one. So, they have what they're doing, which is a plat amendment. They have who's doing it. They have the date, the time, and place. So, they set aside state law. But then they went a little bit of extra effort, and they said, what's going on here? Right? So, this applicant's going to vacate a ski run, and he is going to put this into another law. But if you needed more information, give Amir a call. And here's how you reach Amir. You can call him, you can email him, and you can also look at the staff report on our website. So, again, I think the more information that we can give, the better input we'll get at some of these meetings. Not all of the time, but it's certainly worth a try to look at your noticing procedures and see, what are we really posting there? So, the agenda, we had this discussion for about public input. So, the agenda under state law has, has to list each item to be discussed at the meeting with reasonable specificity. That's the language in the law. So, and, and any issue that is not on a noticed agenda cannot be acted on. So, in other words, if you have your meeting agenda and it's set, and then someone rushes in and says, oh, you have to act on this now, you can't do that if it wasn't on the agenda. So, that's the process. The agenda is typically set by either the mayor and the clerk, or the planning commissioner and the chair. Or if you're lucky to have staff, staff can propose that to the chair or to the mayor. And they usually set the agenda. Certainly, again, in your rules and procedures, you might want to discuss that if, if there wants to be some difference in your community. So, again, agenda, here's an example for you. And again, a planning commission agenda. And again, you can structure how this looks. And I think the question was, do we ask for, do we always have to have this number two here, public input? No, you don't. And in this case, though, if you do have that, make it clear that it's items not on the agenda because the agenda will then detail what type of input is required. I have also made this agenda up to detail administrative versus legislative items. And we also, in our powers and duties class, talk about this and have a little cheat sheet of what these items are. You can find that on the Land Use Academy of Utah website under publications. It talks about administrative legislative, excuse me, and quasi-judicial actions. And why is this important? It's important for council members and planning commissioners to know what the constraints of the law are when they move from one item to another. So, on the first item here, you approve the minutes. You've done your business for that, and you move on. You're asking folks, A, anyone have any input on any other items not on the agenda? Maybe the Boy Scouts want to report to you about their service project. Maybe you want to hear from the council member who went to a really great meeting. Then you move on to what I call administrative items, which is not a public hearing, not a legislative item. It's an item where you're seeing, do they meet the code or not? So, we have a conditional use and a plat approval under those items. And then my fourth area is legislative items, where we would have our public hearings. Okay? So, and then finally, at the end, just information on a transportation plan. So, again, this is just an example. This is a suggestion. There is no right or wrong way to do this, except for if it's not an item on the agenda, then you can't act on it. Spencer, are we have any more questions? Or was anyone able to answer the question from earlier for me that I couldn't?
Yeah, Bruce Parker included an answer, and I'm just going to copy and paste it in the chat box so everybody can see it there.
Thank you, Bruce. Great. Okay, so that's a little bit about noticing, a little about agendas, all under the Open and Public Meetings Act. Emergency meetings, what is that? Well, typically, council members, maybe with the recent COVID-19, you had to have some emergency meetings to find out how to pivot and help serve our communities, which I want to thank you all for, every one of us trying to figure out how to re-navigate with the, the new situation of communicate, not only communication, but how we do business and how we interact. So, I appreciate that. The, has to be a legitimate emergency, not just because we forgot to do the 24-hour notice. And again, you know what that legitimate emergency could be, earthquake, fire, pandemics. So, an attempt to contact all the members of the governor body must be made in order for them to show up. And then you should only discuss and conduct business related to that emergency. Minutes, and again, you're fortunate to have staff and a clerk. That was really, this will be their job. But again, planning commissioners and council members, you need to sort of know this as well. A recording now, under some changes last year, can serve as minutes of a meeting. But all the minutes are supposed to include copies of all materials presented to the body. So, I'm just not quite sure in practice how that works. If you're having some development plans or other things, how does that get translated into the recording? So, probably best to have both still. Again, here are some just parameters on that. The draft minutes have to be made available within a reasonable time of the meeting. And approved minutes have to be available to the public three days after you approve that. So, you'll get some draft minutes. You need to look those over, get those back to the clerk. And then after you approve them at the meeting, then they are available to the public within three days. Somewhat outdated in the sense that, right now, a lot of us are recording our meetings. You can get that recording easier and quicker. A lot of us are posting that. Minutes are not a transcription. They're not a verbatim record. So, they need to be somewhat specific, but they do not need to be item, or word for word. The minutes of a closed meeting, I think we might have gone over this before, but they're optional. You, if minutes are taken, they have to include the date, time, and place. And closed meetings are considered protected documents under grammar. What does that mean? That means that any minutes or those recordings are only issued out into the public at the order of a judge. So, that's meaning that there was some issue, it went to trial, and the judge made that decision. So, very different animal in regards to our regular public meetings that are open and transparent and available, not so with the minutes of a closed meeting. Recordings, all public and open and public meetings have to be recorded. Most closed meetings have to be recorded as well. There are some exceptions to that. They can't be edited or altered, and they must be properly labeled. And again, those have to be made available to the public within three days of the meeting. Again, we're still on Open and Public Meetings Act. It's a big one, but again, important. So, let's get to the electronic meetings portion, which we have all been using. And I'll show you some of the, the changes that happened last Thursday. So, right now, you have to have a rule or ordinance permitting electronic meetings. I hope that 100% of you do. We've probably all got those in place. We had an executive order that gave us an exemption for that right after the COVID pandemic hit. But by now, you should have had ample time to put that rule or ordinance in, in place. What I've crossed out here is that you have to identify an anchor location. In other words, city hall, public building, and someone has to be at that anchor location. And then you can have the electronic participants phone in. That anchor provision was waived under the executive order for COVID. And I'm going to talk on the next slide about how that is now being modified. And that is, House Bill by Representative Potter last Thursday gave us an option that will come into effect when the executive order expires. So, that executive order that I mentioned for COVID-19 waived the requirement for the ordinance provision, and it waived the requirement for an anchor location. And that is in effect right now until August 20th. At, after August 20th, here are the new provisions. It's a narrow exception to the anchor location requirement. And here, here we go. So, if the chair makes a written determination that meeting together creates a substantial risk, risk to health and safety, the public body may hold the electronic meeting without the anchor location. And that determination only lasts for a month, and then you have to do it again in another month. And then you have to obviously put the link to the meeting in the notice. So, these are the updated provisions. You're covered under the executive order. If you still do not want to hold an anchor location, I think it depends on your locality. Some now are doing the anchor, some are not. Again, here are the new rules. Just know that if you're the chair or the mayor, that you're going to need to do that determination, if that makes sense in your community, post August 20th. Unless that order expires, there's some change to that. But as of right now, that executive order is effective until August 20th of this year. Spencer, how we doing? Yep?
Yeah, I have one question, just so we don't get too far beyond it. But in order to upload recordings of long meetings, it's been noted that they have to split the audio file. Is that considered editing or altering?
To just download it and upload it? No, but you can't edit out portions of that file, but no.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. So, we've had a big chunk of the OPMA here. We've got two more to go out of the rules and procedures here of what you need to know. So, what is the requirement? Well, the presiding member of the public body, so the chair, the mayor, you need to ensure that all members of the public body have had this OPMA training. It doesn't state how long the training, what the content of the training is. But I'm sure your attorney in, are fortunate to have an attorney. They've done some of this for you. There's the auditor's office online training. It takes about 15 minutes. That you could also have all of your members do, and it prints out a certificate at the end, so you could present that. We do open and public meanings training. And so, you know, there are different varieties of how you get it. You need to make sure that everyone gets it annually. And again, here is the link that I didn't have before. But it's training at the auditor's office. And again, I highly recommend that, just to be consistent and to, to learn the latest rules on the OPMA. Okay, so that's our second acronym. Now, we're going to have a quick poll, Spencer. See how we're doing here? I haven't done so good on the questions, but maybe you guys will do better than I have. See if we can pull that third one up. So, can we close a meeting if we feel it's getting too rowdy and out of control? All right, we'll go a sec here, see if we have any answers. And then we'll ask Spencer to pop that up for us on the... All right, so for my yeses, maybe you're spicing so, but you can't do that. A closed meeting is the provisions we went on. You have to, and you have to have a reason, and it has to be noticed. If your meeting's out of control, you could stop the meeting, but you can't enter into a closed meeting. Okay, grandma, number three. We're getting close to the, the end of the rules and procedures here. But number three, grandma, the Government Records and Management Act. So, why do we need to know this? And you're, again, your records officer or your clerk will be in charge as the city official of, of complying with grandma. But you need to know that as a planning commissioner or council member about who gets what and what documents. But you can always check with your clerk. So, the premise is that all these records and documents are open and available to the public, again, with certain limited exceptions. In other words, back to our old adage, we're doing the public's business in public. So, the Balancing Act is the public's right of access to the government information, and then the balance with the individual's right to privacy. And, and I think that always has some tweaks and amendments as we move forward, especially in this age of electronics. But the four main features of grandma are, one, you have a classification of different types of records. You have a retention schedule. You have certain mandates to provide those records access to the public and media. And then you have to provide an appeal or review process for dissatisfied persons. So, again, your, your planning commissioners and council members, you don't, aren't responsible for this, but it's good for you to know of it, and that there is someone in your city or town or county that is responsible for following these rules. So, again, your records officer or city clerk, however you designate that, has to follow these processes. And that was my Reader's Digest version of grandma, mostly because I want you to be aware of it. You don't have to process it yourself. But basically, I like to always say, whenever you're doing an email, when you're doing any kind of correspondence in your role for the city, think of it like an old... your role for the city, think of it like an old fashioned letter. And think of it that a lot of people are gonna have eyes on that at some point. So just remember that most of the documentation that you will be, and correspondence that you receive will be, could be subject to a broader view by the public, doing the public's business in public. Okay, yes?
On, on that, can information requested through grandma be denied because it's too intensive a request?
No, so there, again, and there are specific provisions, and I would look to your clerk, but you can charge a reasonable fee for, for the copying and gathering, you know, administrative time for that, and there's parameters under the act for that. I think one of the big discussions we've been having over the years, though, is how do you deal with people who just are doing it in a nuisance fashion? And I believe there's some, I believe there's discussion about how to, how, I don't know, I don't believe the fix was made, but there is discussion about trying to get that fix. And again, what I'm talking about is someone who constantly is asking you for things, and it's not necessarily, it's more harassment than for some end of public purpose. And I don't know if any of you've had that situation, but we, in fact, at the league too, had an issue where a gentleman was consistently asking us for huge volumes of information. But I believe you're bound to give that, and there's timelines and a monetary charge that you can charge them to recoup the cost of time spent doing that. Okay, ethics, our final, final fantastic four here. Ethics apply to all of you on the city council, on the planning commission, any other rules or procedure boards that you have set up, parks and rec, other, other boards that we discussed at the beginning. So we have the Municipal Officers and Employees Ethics Act, we have the Counties Officer and Employees Disclosure Act, and then the Public Officials and Employees Ethics Act. What is, what do all of these things do? Why do I care? Well, it basically says you can't use the office for personal gain, and you have a disclosure requirement. So let's talk about that, let's talk about disclosure. When you got the great news that you were appointed to the planning commission, or the great news that you were elected, your city, town, or county should have given you a disclosure form. There is no provision of when this has to be updated, but we, you know, like to say, you should probably do it annually or biannually, especially if you're on a position for a long time. And that disclosure statement just basically says what your interests are in the community. In other words, I own the laundromat, I own the movie theater, I don't own anything, and I just work for this entity. So it's just a public disclosure, and then, and, and again, that should be on record and open to the public. And you aren't allowed to accept gifts, and what is a gift? Under the Municipal Officer and Employees Ethics Act, it's $50 or less. We recommend, again, you use your own moral compass in deciding what those are, but anything of value, $50 or less. You're required to do that disclosure, again, also if you also work for an arm of the city, or you have an interest in a regulated business, again, like the laundromat, that would be subject to zoning and business license fees. So again, these are some of the provisions, and again, it's that transparency that we're after here in the public sector. So there is a process under the, under these entities for removal from office if you believe that there has been a violation, you have a right to go to a ethics appeal board, either created by your city or town, or there's a state board. So if you haven't set this up, you're at your own municipality administratively for a review board, then it goes to the state review board, and they would take final action. So again, you need to, to know this, you need to understand that disclosure law, you also need to understand at a meeting, besides the disclosure form, that if you're at a planning commission meeting and you are about to hear them ban all future laundromat businesses in your city or town, and you are the one laundromat owner, you need to, at the beginning of that meeting, raise your hand, say, Mr. Chair, I'd like to identify that I own the one laundromat in town. And then you have a choice, you can either remove yourself from the discussion, or you can continue to participate. The state law just simply says you have to verbally admit that disclosure. Now, here's a little twist, just to think about, is that, let's say, you make that disclosure, and then you do not want to participate, you want to go out and be a member of the public and cheer and shout because they're gonna ban all future laundromats, and you're gonna make millions because you're the only one in town. That's, that's your choice, but let's say you decide to do that, and you step down from the dais, and, or you leave the room, however you want to handle it. If, if that removal of your, of your presence from that body makes it so there's not a quorum, then the chair can make you vote. So you cannot also use that removal of yourself from participating in the discussion or the vote as a quorum buster. So does that make sense? I can disclose and I can remove myself, but I may be called back if the chair decides that's not gonna, we're not gonna have a quorum in order to take action on the item. Any questions so far, Spencer?
No, you're good.
Okay, so we are just coming up on one o'clock. This pretty much concludes the fantastic four, which is rules and procedures. So you have to figure out how you're gonna conduct your meetings, no state requirement on what's in that, just that you have it. You have to comply with the Open and Public Meetings Act, we went quickly through process, minutes, transparency, doing the public's business in public, the Government Records and Management Act, thank your clerk for having to deal with all that retention schedule, and who gets what, and how they get it. And then the Ethics Act, again, know that you have to do your disclosure, know that you can't receive a gift more than $50, and know that there's a process if there is a, an issue with one of your members, that there's a process for them to go through that review board for any potential violations. Those are the fantastic four, lot more in each of those, except for one, because you write your own. We have some examples on our Land Use Academy of Utah website, from simple to complex, just to give you a starting point, if you don't have your own rules and procedures, but I'm sure that you do. But you might want to check them now. And then remember that the electronic anchor rule for meetings is still in, in, under the law until August 20th of this year, at then which time you will need to do a monthly reasoning of why you still need to not have that anchor location depending on the state of the pandemic in your community. So that was a lot, I appreciate that, I appreciate the chat box helping me out there on some answers, appreciate your participation, we very much appreciate at the league what you do for our cities and towns and counties, so thank you. Yes?
Before we go, can we answer one more question?
I'll try.
Yeah, in your last example, could, of the laundromat, could the individual choose to abstain as their official vote?
To abstain is what, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Spencer.
To abstain as their official vote?
Um, sure, they could, again, if it, if it, if, if, yes, they can.
Okay, and then just one more question, for legislative actions, for example, creating an ordinance, is there a requirement to hold a public hearing for gathering input?
So yes, when you're creating a land use ordinance, or a new zoning district, or something in that legislated room, arena, that is where the public hearing process under the state statute holds the requirement. Right now, typically for most land use amendments to an ordinance, a creation of an ordinance, the planning commission is required under law to hold one public hearing. And that was revised several years ago. Typically, our communities also hold a hearing at the council arena, but you're not required to under state law. But again, yes, absolutely required to have a public hearing, administrative items, not so much, in fact, none under the state law for administrative items, for that fact that you're administering the law. So take a look at your procedures, see what makes sense for your community. But again, when you can streamline things that meet your code, we recommend and encourage you to do that, where you need that input, create that input that works best for you in your community.
And I think that's it.
Excellent, again, heartfelt thanks to all that you do in your communities, everybody, I hope you're enjoying some of the warm weather, and we will see you again soon. Thank you so much for taking the time, and Spencer, thank you so much for helping me navigate today. Bye-bye.